We can.
Okay.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the solicit the flag and we have a young lady to come with up here with us tonight. Welcome. Okay, you're gonna stay right here next to me and you ready? Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the great soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, should we have your mom get a picture of everybody?
No.
Stay here, we, I think we want a picture.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll move in. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That good?
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Charlotte. Thanks so much.
Have a good meeting.
Thanks.
Have fun at school tomorrow.
All right, roll call of members?
Trustee Tomley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Chester Herzog.
Here.
Mayor McHatch.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
So.
And a second? Is that it? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries. Oh. Code enforcement officer. It was supposed to leave that on my desk. Did he?
Yes, he did, but didn't make copies.
No. Okay. And I didn't, I didn't make copies either. So.
I saw.
I got it.
Do you have it?
Oh, women, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. You have it, but I don't have it. Oh, my copying? No, code enforcement, not superintendent's.
No, I've got, I've got it.
Yeah.
It was in my box.
Oh.
Is that this, this?
For this time?
Um.
Eight one to eight thirty one?
No, no, this is, this is August, this is the month of February.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
He gave it to us late last month.
Okay, that's why.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, well, if you're okay with me getting it at the end of the meeting and?
That's fine.
Okay, let's do that.
I think there was just a lot of grass and the only ones that we could see were just property management ones.
Okay.
Yeah, that I see, there's a lot, there's like ten pages out together.
Yeah.
Cause it's, all right, it's a lot of other places.
Okay. Um, here's my report. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board Meeting. What a beautiful autumn we have had. I know Main Street travel by car and foot has been much disrupted, but progress is being made. The new sidewalks from Church Street to Cedar Street are close to complete and they are fantastic. It's much safer and attractive and will be easier to clear of snow this winter. The areas between the sidewalk and the street will be reseeded this week for grass to grow. A huge thanks to the P W crew for all their hard work on this project. It is greatly appreciated and many, many compliments are coming in. The waterline replacement project continues to move forward. This work goes to, uh, this current work is going to the intersection with Cedar Street and then it will move up to Mill Street and then up to the Second Willow Street. There will be disruption of service several times as connections are made to new lines. We thank you for your patience. Boil water notices will be distributed and also the Village Facebook page will be updated with the most current information. There are a number of events taking place in the village this month. There will be a blood drive at the Champlain Meeting House on October eighteenth from one to four. On October twenty fourth at six thirty P M, author Jim Howard will speak at the Red Canoe about his book on Growing Up in Ross's Point. Our annual trunk or treat will take place on Saturday, October twenty sixth from one to two thirty at the playground. We are still looking for people to come decorate their trunks and hand out candy. Uh, and then the next day, Sunday, the twenty seventh at two P M, there will be a reverse trick or treat activity where children in costume give out candy to the residents at their housing.
Can you translate that?
Um, that is at two. Um, also, um, please note that the board will be discussing the moratorium on burning in the village and will reinstate the ban on any kind of fires, including recreational campfires. This is done annually to allow campfires during the summertime and early fall only. I thank all the residents for their cooperation in keeping Champlain Village a safe and enjoyable place to live. Please reach out to me if you have any concerns, questions, or suggestions. My door is always open. Thank you. A report from the trustees. Joel, do you have anything?
Nothing really. Um, just wanted to say thank you to the Public Works crew. Uh, I see them most mornings out very early and the sidewalks look great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Um, I have a few events coming up. Our next walk to connect is October twelfth at two. And we're starting at the Kempex parking lot and we'll walk that end of the trail between Elm Street and Parkhead Drive. On the twenty sixth. Before, the trunk or treat is the town three K, five K walk run. Uh, with the kids run starting at nine thirty. Costumes are encouraged and that's fifteen dollars per person or forty per family. There is, I don't think there's an event for it, but there is information out there on the town, on the town page.
There's a flyer.
Yeah.
I put one up today, here.
And it went out for the schools too.
Okay, good.
It is out there. Um, let's see, the trunk or treat is afternoon. Um, October twenty seventh at five thirty, the library is having their annual carve pumpkin contest at five thirty. There is a Facebook event page for that, it just got done today by our new director. So we are welcoming Christine Levitin-Briette as our new director of the Champlain Memorial Library. Um, Alison Mandeville has retired after twenty one and a half years.
Wow. Thank you to Alison.
Yeah, and she's still making her way over. Um, she definitely is going to enjoy more time to read the books. Um, and she's still working with Christine on a few different things, so, um, that'll be good. October is, um, the North Country Library Pro. It's our fourth year, I think, doing that, so our library is participating as well as thirty five or forty other libraries in three counties and Vermont. Um, so anytime during October, stop into any of the library during their open hours. Um, we have a passport that you can stamp and then at the end of the month, all those passports get put in the drawing for, um, prize, a couple prize baskets, I believe. Uh, some of the libraries have events going on, some don't, but it's just a chance to get out there and see other libraries and, um, you know, check them out, socialize and so on. Uh, and on the library note, we're also looking for a few more trustees. We have one who will be stepping down as of January. So it's nice to get out and volunteer and we definitely can use that after hands. That's all.
Great, thanks. Kim?
Um, the only thing that I wanted to add to the, um, the, the fun run for the town is that, um, please, no dogs.
That's right.
They did put it on the flyer that they would, they do not want to have pets at the walk. And I don't know if you said this, but costumes are encouraged.
Okay, great. All right. A report from the clerk treasurer.
Um, everyone has their expense revenue for, for September. Don't think we're doing bad, it's still early, we only have our first quarter.
Yeah, that's right, we're just through our first quarter. Does anyone have any particular questions before we?
No.
No. Okay, so we have some additional invoices here.
Um, we have additional invoices of five thousand one oh eight thirty one for a total warrant of twenty two thousand nine ninety seven twenty five.
You have a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices? So. Is there a second?
Second.
About any discussion on any of this?
I have a question. Um, so our website services. I occasionally go on to the village website and just look at things and like our minutes haven't been added since March.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I there's, there's just stuff on there that is lacking.
Needs updating.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I also can send some, um, pictures to Erin to have them updated because they're really cute of like Cora when she was five.
I do have some new ones.
If you have those, send them to me.
Yeah.
I can get them to Erin.
Yeah, I have some too, so we can, together we can send some to you to send her. They're adorable, but they're, yeah, from a while ago.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, did we have any pictures on there, like from the tree planting that was done and the recent tree planting?
Oh, not the recent one, we may have one of the first tree planting that was done.
Back in like twenty fifteen. Yes, they are, they're on there. So, just, I, I just, um, and I know it's nice to give someone local, um, the opportunity for that, but just like we need to have some updates more often.
And that's up to us to send it to her.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, good point. Um, any other comments on the warrant? Roll call.
Trustee Tomley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McHatch.
Aye.
Um, we also have two invoices to pay for the water project or to approve. Um, financial advisors and marketing, one thousand six eighty nine fifty. And T J Piaco Construction, one hundred and twenty nine thousand four twelve eighty for a total of one hundred and thirty one thousand one oh two thirty.
Okay, I may have a motion to approve that. And a second? Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Tomley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McHatch.
Aye. Thank you, one evening. A report from the superintendent. Mike has a detailed report about what's been going on. Lots and lots and lots of stuff. As I said in my report, excellent progress on the water main replacement. And the sidewalks. Finally got the new truck, I say new truck, the newest truck back. It's gone, it was in the shop for twenty six days. It was a little difficult to manage everything, but a few vehicles. He has a couple of suggestions about the diamond mapping, um, and, um, and some waterboard things, but I think we'll just, um, save that for when that comes up on the agenda later. If that's fine?
Yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions on that? Uh, correspondence?
Correspondence from Robert McCray regarding vacant building registry. Uh, correspondence from Nymer regarding battery disconnect switches in the vehicles. Correspondence from Roberta Davies regarding vacant building registry. Chip funding report from New York State Department of Transportation.
So the code enforcement officer is primarily handling the vacant building questions, just to let you know. And as far as the battery disconnect switches, those have all been taken care of, so that's all set. Don't let me forget that Mike also has a quote for approval. I can add that later. Under new business, um, we need to, we do an Arbor Day proclamation, um, each year. And so we'll do that now. Arbor Day proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy two, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain do hereby proclaim the last Friday of April is Arbor Day in the Village of Champlain, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. May I have a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, and then I will, um, reapply for the Tree City USA status this, later in the fall. This is one of the requirements. Uh, waterboard report. All right, I don't know if you brought copies of it or not. I know it was emailed to you, so you probably have it. Uh, I gave you, um, Chuck couldn't be here tonight, he had, um, a brief message regarding it. I have a couple of things that, um, I'm wondering about. So, Kim, because you're on the waterboard, I'm gonna direct these to you.
Okay.
Even though I know you're one member of the waterboard.
Right.
Do you wanna pull it out first?
I don't.
Or do you have it?
Um, I'll have to put, see if I've got it on my phone.
It's not, it's not very lengthy, my comments.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, on page two, where it's at the top, it says water supply. It says the waterboard evaluated the expense data provided by both municipalities. I think it's actually the revenue data that we're talking about there, but maybe that's just semantics, but. Um, and then it says the water rates are as follows, and it gives the village rates. And then it says town, district, residential, and commercial rates were six twenty five per K G L. I wonder if you might add the rates as charged by the village? Because six twenty five, when I first read this, I thought, they're not six twenty five, they're thirteen, whatever they are. But the six twenty five is what the village charges them.
Right.
Do you think?
Well.
Maybe? Well, maybe you don't even need to.
Maybe you don't even need to answer it, I guess I could put it in a letter, but I'm just bringing it up to see what, how the board feels. Because then we have to put in there what the town then charges on top of that.
Which you do. You do have that, but it's on a different section.
Okay.
So I was thinking that maybe, let's see, that is on page four. It is in there on page four.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it is in there on page four.
Oh, it's probably in there under the town section, so I think there's a, like a village section of things, and then a town section.
Yeah, so I was wondering if you might add, I feel bad because I'm referring to this piece of paper and I can't even see it.
That's okay.
Um, that if you might add to the paragraph, um, below that the town, district, residential, and commercial rates are six twenty five per K G L with an additional seven sixty five resulting in thirteen ninety plus a twenty five dollar surcharge. Like it would be complete in that section.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, so what I, okay, so if you wanna, I don't know if you wanna give me a photocopy of that page or, but, and I know you're gonna do a formal, a formal, um, letter. Those, those changes will all be made in next year's report.
Okay.
Because.
I know, because this is already out.
It, right, it's already, it's already done and it's been two months.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Um, I just think that, but those are good changes, um, verbiage for next year.
Okay, so I'll do that, or I'll, I'll give you a copy or I'll write it in there.
Okay.
Or I'll, I'll give you a copy and I'll also add it to the letter.
Right.
Um, so under the, um, the, uh, let's see. You have some recommendations from the town. I guess I'm wondering if we should recommend that hydrant trimming in the town be done by the town highway department? I mean, it's something we could request.
Yeah, I see no reason why they shouldn't be.
Yeah, so they, they, um, our department of public works spent about twenty four hours trimming the town hydrants this summer.
Is this something that's all, like, it's something that's always been done and is that why it's still continuing, or is this just something new?
I'm thinking.
Because I, I don't know.
I'm thinking that they got so overgrown that it finally just was done this summer. Because they do the flushing, so obviously they need access to the hydrants and they were so covered by weeds that they spent twenty four hours trimming them.
Okay.
Emergency services, they need access.
Yeah.
It would have to be
Yeah.
Taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
Like, you know, like a propane tank, you have to make sure your tank's accessible.
Yeah.
Even in the winter. Those would be the, yeah.
So are you comfortable with that being a recommendation in the response from the village?
Definitely.
All right. Does anyone else have any other recommendations?
This is, this is waterboard?
This is the waterboard report that, uh, the waterboard put out and that Kim put together and we have to write a response and we are late on that. I apologize for that. But I do wanna get that out and so I'm thinking the hydrants is one recommendation. Does anyone have anything else? No? I guess that will be it. Still gonna talk about diamond mapping?
I have no recommendations.
Oh, do you have another recommendation?
No, I don't because I've, I've lived this, so.
I know.
My recommendations are all in the report.
I know they are.
But these are, these are good recommendations. Yeah.
Yeah.
So what? What fire should we stop?
In the town along Route eleven primarily. That, some of them, you would never even know they were there because the weeds were so tall, you could not see them.
Okay. Now.
Yeah, so I think it's a, I think it's a very, um, you know, I think it's a good recommendation. And they're, I believe, I mean, I don't know exactly what the town has to do in regards to highways, but I'm sure they also clean the ditches and they do a lot of work along the roads. Okay. All right. So that's, uh, the waterboard report and then kind of included and to the side of it, we have the diamond mapping. We passed, uh, we passed a motion last month saying that we were going to, um, going to go with unlimited users and the town would join in, and that was on the belief that it was forty dollars a month. Um, Mike Jollker requested a quote and it came in at one thirty one a month. Uh, and that's an inter, I think it's an enterprise system that's based on population. So we need to discuss how we're going to proceed.
So I only have a few questions.
Um, that's good.
Do we know where the, where the forty figure came from? Where, like, and I'm not even like trying to say, you know, you told me this or that, but like where did that ever?
It is, it is on, it is on the diamond mapping website.
Okay.
Um, I be, I believe it's based on a lower population. Like add another user, it's forty dollars, but I believe it's based on population.
And so we, we did have a discussion with them, where we spoke to them and got a quote from them, and they did reiterate that it was this cost, cause I know that we spoke about that this is, we are some sort of subsidiary or we have some other, like Rafa systems, I've never heard of anything.
Yeah, we have a, we have a third-party vendor, but I think, I believe, diamond mapping, I believe, has the same costs.
Okay.
See, and I didn't see anywhere in Sarah's email where it states that it was based on population.
I think I might, I might have that here. I didn't pull it out.
Cause I only, I only have the recent one that she sent.
So this is from Diamond Maps. And, um, let me see if it's here or not.
But that would also lead me to another point, Janet.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to the county of Essex.
Mm-hmm.
They're paying forty dollars.
Do we know that for a fact?
Right.
With unlimited?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because I believe Sarah's called all these people.
And, and got their costs? So this says, for example, a small community that serves a population under two thousand can get the unlimited use for less than the cost of two users.
Well.
And just to be clear, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Because we're, it's under the O and M, it's considered both of us together or one account, so that is, we would, we are above the two thousand, or?
Yeah, I mean, if we joined in together, um, if we wanted to do it together, unlimited users, Mike was told that it was one thirty one a month based, and he gave the population of the village and the, and the outside town.
Yeah. But that was, that was to, to the Rafa Systems LLC. Was that not?
Yeah, but I, I'm reading.
Cause they didn't ask what the quote says.
But I'm reading Diamond Maps and they said, under two thousand, you can get it for the, of less than two users, which is the forty.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find, there's something else here.
Yes, and I do, I, they've got a reference in here, Diamond Maps is used by a couple thousand communities around the country. Our closest customers to you are Village of Champlain, St. Regis Mohawk Tribe, Town of Woolsville, and Essex Water.
Oh, I know they use it, but I don't know what they pay.
Sure, all less than, there's no way to build any of those two thousand.
Woolsville is very small.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I, my only question is, are we just paying these guys, you know, thirty percent more because we bought it from them and they're not actually the person who's?
I don't think so, because our single user is nineteen dollars.
Yeah, so then?
So, which is the same, Diamond Maps says they're twenty, so I don't, I don't think so. Um, but there is something, I, maybe, I don't have it right here, but there is, it, it's based on population. So I'm not saying that that quote is inaccurate. I believe that quote is right.
And so, again, this gets even more than any gritty, is there a plan that's not unlimited? Is it just two lines? Cause I, I thought this was what it came down to, is that it was Chris who wanted to have access to the account. And, you know, I guess unlimited would be nice so that everybody could do their own thing, in theory, that would be great, but if it's just Mike has his and Chris has one, is that, is that forty dollars?
Yeah, well, if, if Chris at the town had just his and Mike just had his separately, that would be nineteen dollars each. Yes.
But would Chris's be nineteen necessarily? Cause he's with the town and their population is over two thousand.
No, I think a single user is nineteen.
Or just a single user.
A single user is nineteen. Um, and then keep in mind that in talking to Chris and Mike, they both feel like they are sharing the information now.
So okay.
So if the town wants theirs?
I could see why the town would want it, because my goodness, they've got so many roads and so many culverts and so many things they could use, it's a really, really cool system.
If they're gonna charge per population, then nineteen and nineteen is the forty dollars. If they're gonna charge per population, then nineteen and nineteen is the forty dollars.
Well, I wouldn't do, yeah, separate, yes.
Separate, separate.
Or if the town did it on their own and...
Right.
And took out the population of the village, it probably would be less.
Right, yeah. If, yeah, if this is what the quote is to go unlimited, then it wouldn't be necessary.
Right.
And if it's just Chris using it?
Well, right, right now, I think it would be. I, I could see how other people potentially in the town would use it. I don't see anyone other than Mike using it here, but the town, I would think they would, they could really use it.
I mean, yeah, I think completely in favor of spending twenty dollars more a month, spending a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars more a month, or a hundred and twelve, or whatever the exact number is, seems a little bit more than what I would expect, and okay to spend Chipotle money, but, you know, anyway. That's just my thought.
And, and the other thing that I, I bought, I brought up really briefly last month, and, but I do think we should discuss it again, is at the beginning, this was part of the, the project, the water project, and, and it was part of the O and M, because everything was being plotted. I'm not sure that it's part of O and M anymore. I mean, yes, a portion is water, but it's also sewer. It's also, I mean, it could be anything, it could be the length of the sidewalks, it could be the manhole covers, it could be historic markers, it could be anything. So, I'm not sure if it's part of operation maintenance, and Kim, I guess I'd lean on you, because you're on the waterboard. How would they, how would they feel about that? I see how it was to begin with, but I'm not sure if it's changed now.
Um... I don't, I don't think that they would have a, a feeling one way or the other. I, I guess they would feel if, if it doesn't really belong there, then take it out of the O and M. It's the board's decision what's, what they wanna do, it's not the waterboard's decision as to whether that comes out or not.
I mean, it's not gonna make a big difference if we take it out?
No, but we've been very, very careful about making sure that we capture all of the true expenses to, and I know it's not a big, it's not a big sum of money, but we've been really careful about getting the accurate expenses.
Mm-hmm.
And that may not be an accurate one now. I'm just suggesting that, I, I don't really know, but, um, it's used beyond just water now, which it should be.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
That's what it's for.
Yeah.
I'm just mentioning that.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just only gonna say what I think, and my voting for it last meeting was that it, the cost benefit seemed to be there, it was only twenty dollars more a month, and the hopes were that we could hopefully have a little bit more teamwork and be able to work together, and be able to, you know, work on any sort of issues that, um, just shared services, any of those things overlap of like, okay, well, this needs to be done, this or that. Being able to have one map and one system where we can all see where we stand, and then we can be able to find some way to work together, then that seems to be the best way. Now, if we have to pay five times that to be able to have that, you know, magical plan, then I'm kind of a less, um, less enthusiastic about it.
Well, we could rescind that motion that we passed, based just on, on the cost. Or we can table it and try to get more information, it doesn't matter. We have not signed up for the multi-user at this point. I, we did not accept that quote, so right now, we're still on a single user, and when Chris is here, he, and Mike look at the maps together, and he can share the thirty-day map with Chris, anyway. So I don't know what, where do you wanna go on this? Oh, maybe I should read Chuck's comment, so, just so... He said, "In light of the high quote for the upgrade of the diamond map, software far exceeds what was passed by the board at the last meeting, it should be rescinded. We currently pay nineteen a month, and if we upgrade, that will be increased to a hundred and thirty-one per month." I think we should take it out of the O and M, and the village pay for their own diamond map, so, the software. Just so that's on the record. Do you wanna wait and deal with it next month?
I, I think we should, I think, I think we, I think we do it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just can't hold it. Um, yeah, I think I've said my piece. Nineteen's far different than one thirty-one.
Yeah. Can someone put that in a motion, please?
Motion to rescind the previous motion of last month approving the payment of Diamond Maps upgrade. And I don't know, did I say anything else?
Do you think that covers it? Yeah, is there a second? Second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, I'm, I do wanna throw this idea out again, not for approval, just for you to think about. I forget what the, the tool is called, that, the GPS locator, is that what it's called?
The end.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's the thing that's really, really expensive.
GPS locator.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that is very, very expensive, and the one that we have, um, that Mike and Chris use is, um, through the, was paid through the project. I could see an upgrade of that, and I'm just gonna toss out the idea that maybe that could be a shared expense with the town. When we buy one, we don't each buy ones, and we share that. And no decision right now, I don't have any dollar information, but it's very expensive. And if the town does sign up for their own, I don't think they should have to go buy one, and then we should buy one, I think we should share. So I'm just gonna put that out there as an idea. Okay? Any comments?
I don't think that's a great idea.
I think it's like twenty-five hundred or something.
If it was originally bought for the project, and we wanna use it.
I mean, it's being, you know, it is being shared, but we're also all, we're all sharing in the cost as we pay that loan back, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But will it be, if Chris needs to use it, is he going to be able to use it, or is he gonna have to go stick like blue, you know, blue flag in the ground, and then Mike's gonna go shoot it?
No, or have the other one.
Yeah, we, I mean, we would have the old one too. No, I think it would be, it would go back and forth, I think it'd be shared, yeah. And it's not something that, I mean, right now, it's being used a lot because of the points on this project, but it's not something that's used all the time usually. So no, I think he should have full access to that, that would be my, my thinking. Alright, so we can discuss that later. Um, let's see here, where are we? Burning ban, oh, I forgot the date of when we, uh, said this ran through.
I think it was Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, 'cause we usually, we stop it before Halloween.
Okay, I think, I think we end like that Monday, fifteenth or whatever.
Yeah, I meant to, I meant to jot down the exact dates for the motion, but I, I don't have those, so...
Because I think we, we usually did it because Columbus Day can tend to be nice.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we need a motion to put the burning ban back into effect, beginning, you have a calendar there.
Yeah, we're just bringing it up.
Monday would be the fourteenth.
Monday, the fourteenth, I, we should go maybe to the fifteenth, because...
Yeah, the next day.
Yeah.
And then we go to like the third week of May about?
Yeah, we usually start it just before Memorial Day. Would you like that date?
I would like that date. I meant to look this up.
Well, I'm Memorial Day, hold on.
So it starts the seventeenth?
Yes.
Saturday?
Either Friday the sixteenth or Saturday the seventeenth, that would be the week before.
So the seven, the seventeenth, the Saturday? Is that alright?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so maybe I have a motion reinstating the burning ban in the Village of Champlain from October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
It was a nice year to burn, I suppose.
What?
It was a nice year.
It was a very nice year.
Yes, I know, it's out last weekend.
We just used those two weeks ago.
I was just at a fire in the village the other day, the other night. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alright, the only other thing I have is Mike provided two quotes for road plates that are used when installing culverts or digging near roadways, uh, very expensive. So one comes in at four thousand sixty-seven and sixty-nine cents, the other one's at four thousand five hundred forty-four and eighty cents. We have a motion to approve quote number one. Four thousand sixty-seven, sixty-nine.
This is for putting over the road with a date or something?
Yeah, those big, those big plates, those big steel plates. I don't think we have much choice in this, honestly, I know it's a lot of money, but we have...
I know, it's, we got the second quote, didn't have those two extra add-ons, because it'd be very close.
Yeah. Yep.
I suppose we can use lead.
Use what?
Just true.
Does anyone wanna move this motion here?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks.
For quote number one, for four thousand sixty-seven, sixty-nine cents.
You may have a second?
Second.
Any other, any other discussion? All for a roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Lewinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor Fetterman.
Aye.
Were you mentioning anything about this?
Oh, yes, yes. Mary, thank you for doing that.
I don't, it's not a perfect thing, so...
No, but it's a great start. One of the requests by the town is that there be a, um, shared work request order regarding water, and water and sewer. So we already had one here in the village for a new service, but we didn't have a work order request. And I talked to Mary about this this morning, and she came up with this great form already, thank you so much. We would, we would post it on our websites, both of them, and then we would have paper copies as well. Comments?
It looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything's updated, right?
Mm-hmm.
I like it.
Yeah, I, I, I s, I say we go with it.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't think we need a motion to approve this, do we? I mean, it's a form.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, it looks really good, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that so quickly. Any other business that should come before the board?
My tentative date for the cooking class is November seventeenth.
November seventeenth.
Is that at the meeting house?
Yeah, is that a double?
I think so. I don't have a refrigerator yet, it broke.
I know, that's okay.
There was water everywhere.
No.
Yeah, but I will get one.
I don't think I have any refrigerator.
No, but it's kinda nice stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Still move?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, I said, I'm sorry.
I knew that nod meant aye.
I said, I said earlier, what are you guys?
I just see when I sent out the...